Thank you very much.
I love it, which art heavens, Heavenly Fathers would come together for this meet tonight. I pray that each and everything is done for the better of Mount Pleasant. And bless all the commissioners, Heavenly Fathers, and the leaders of Mount Pleasant. I ask in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Amen.
All right. Reddick, Luke Calrow, please.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Vining-Schip? Here. Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Ms. Grandee?
Let the minutes show she's absent at this time. She comes into the recording, she may be pleased. All right, next we have on here approval correction of amendments from our prior meeting on February 19th. Anybody sees any changes? Anything to be made? If you're none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the corrections of the amendments.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
We have a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have awards, presentations, and appointments. And I'm going to come down front just a moment. We've got a handful of these. Now, we've got this full up today. Let me rephrase that. The first one we have, do we have anybody here representing Ms. Lily Burdis Porter Sewell?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to come forward, please?
Are you expecting other family?
No.
Okay. Just my care.
Bill White?
I'll be Sewell.
My pleasure.
Yes, sir.
We have a proclamation today from the City of Mount Pleasant, which is actually dated March 31st, which I think was a request from the family.
Yes.
Oh, neat. Whereas the City of Mount Pleasant is proud of individuals who bring personal pride, belief in family, spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city. I'm not going to read all this. But the person that we want to recognize is Ms. Lily Burdis Porter Sewell, otherwise known as Mama Lily.
Mama Lily.
As she is affectionately known as the matriarch of the Porter Sewell family. She was born to Lindsay and Ella Porter on March 31st of 1914. And little they broke the mold at 105 years old. Her longevity of life speaks volumes. Woodrow Wilson was the President of the United States when she was born. Then 19 Presidents had obviously during her lifetime. It goes on here that Ms. Sewell is resident of Life Care Center in Columbia, and she's the center of attention. And I bet she is at 105. She, along with her three others at the center, were recognized as the oldest. Lily was the oldest. She traveled to Nashville, Tennessee, received an honor through the original Church of God, and received a plaque in recognition of her honor. She frequently sings her favorite song, "Will the Beanie Stars in My Crown." She has many, many grandchildren, and her five children still survive, and they take care of them because she is a very special person to them all. Whereas, the City of Mount Pleasant and its mayor and board of commissioners wish to join in honoring this outstanding individual at this time. Therefore, I, Bill White, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, would hereby recognize and proclaim Sunday, March 31st, 2019, and its Ms. Lily Sewell Day. Congratulations. Does anything you'd like to say?
No, I'd just like to say now, she grew up at Sandillo, right across the creek from the Rinffrose and the Masses. The Benavides family with that, where the old pump house used to be. But that's why she lived all her life, because she fell and broke her hip. Then she had to be put in life care. And just a short time ago, right before Christmas, the Sheriff of Murray County was there at the Life Care for us presentation, and he leaned down to her and said, "Ms. Sewell, is it okay if I kiss you?" And she looked at him and said, "Let me check with my mama."
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. That's great. The next proclamation we have is for the Mount Pleasant Teachers of the Year. Do we have anybody here for that?
I do not see anybody.
I'm just going to read these out right quick. It is as of today, but whereas the Mount Pleasant Teachers of the Year are Shannon Parsons, Mount Pleasant Elementary School, Aubrey Bright, Mount Pleasant Middle School, and Matt Yuhas. Am I pronouncing that correctly for those of you that go there? Everybody shaking their head, yes, I can't believe I did that. Each possessed the characteristics and are being recognized for his outstanding accomplishments, dedication, and consummance of Mount Pleasant. Wish they were here, but these folks do a great job for our community. So, if you run into those folks, please tell them thank you. I'll let y'all have that back so we don't get it all messed up. Next, we have is three of these. Next, we have is, wow, this one's fun. Whereas, the citizens of the City of Mount Pleasant are rightfully proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have dedication to success, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city. And whereas, Ms. Maddie Hay is a 17-year-old, lifelong resident of Mount Pleasant. She is the daughter of Michael and Jessie Hay. Yeah, come right on up. Maddie has attended Mount Pleasant Schools kindergarten through 12th grade. Maddie ranks second in her senior class. Patty Pickens, favorite. Congratulations.
Thank you.
99.45 GPA. I can't even spell that hard enough. And was named the 2019 Mount Pleasant High School Salutatorian. She has been a Beta Club member all four years of high school. Maddie is also a high school cheerleader for four years and has completed in two. Help me.
ECA National.
Representing the Mount Pleasant Tigers, she is 18/19 yearbook editor, three-year member of the softball team, student council, and pep club member. How'd you make 99.45 doing all that? Pep club member Maddie has served on the Heritage Youth Bank Board, leadership Murray, was a 2018 Girls State Representative. She enjoys volunteering in various organizations to help our local Mount Pleasant community such as the Santa Trolley, Gardenia Park fundraiser, and Mount Pleasant Parks and events. She was voted 2019 Miss NPHS by her senior class. And I'd like to congratulate you for that. It's wonderful. I know your mom and dad are very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for supporting my endeavors.
Thank you. Okay, Zion? Any of the family members like to come up with him?
I'm surprised.
Bill White?
My pleasure.
Congratulations. Whereas, the citizens of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee are rightfully proud of those and individuals who bring personal pride, have a dedication to success, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city. Zion, a resident of Mount Pleasant, possesses these characteristics and being recognized for his outstanding accomplishments. He was just voted Mr. NPHS in the class of Mount Pleasant High School. Zion has attended Mount Pleasant High School and has played football and basketball all four years. In football, his junior year, he received All Region, and his senior year, he was awarded with Mr. Football Semifinalist. That's awesome. All-State and Region Offensive MVP. While playing basketball, his junior year, he was awarded Region MVP, and senior year, he reached 1,000 points.
Wow.
He will continue his football career at Morehead State University in the fall. Whereas, the City of Mount Pleasant's mayor and board of commissioners wish to join in honoring this outstanding individual for his accomplishments at this time. Congratulations. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for the support. And everything got different.
Thank you. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
Don't want to say?
All right, number six, completion review of any unfinished business from prior meeting.
Power board? Which one?
Power board.
Oh, yeah, right, D. The mayor's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mayor's appointing the Mount Pleasant Power System Board. I need to, this is going to be another opportunity for me to speak up and let everybody know where I stand. I received a letter from the Mount Pleasant Power System requesting that Pearl White, which is my father, I need to make that very clear, has been on that board for a number of years, and they have requested that he continue to serve on that board. I do need to make everybody aware that that is a paying board. It is about the only one that we have within our community that is. But I do need to make everybody aware that there is a monetary gain, you might say. I don't want to call it a gain from the time they put it in. But that is a, it does pay a little bit each month. So, with that being said, I'm going to recuse myself from this and let y'all do what needs to be done.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to say one thing before we vote. It has been an honor to serve Mr. Pearl on the power board.
But at Cory's request, I'm going to ask somebody else.
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Pearl White on the power board.
I'll second that at the recommendation of the power board to renew his term.
Okay. Would you please let the minutes show Commissioner Graham Beers? And with that, do we need to call a vote for that? Cory?
Um, yes.
Okay. With that, I'm going to back out. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm going to recuse myself, please. All those opposed?
Pass this forward to one.
Pass. Thank you. Anything else I need to do on that, Cory?
Nope.
Okay.
You made the appointment, and then they ratified.
All right. Now, number six, completion review of any unfinished business from prior meeting.
None.
Nothing? Okay. There won't be a monthly report from the mayor as such. I'll discuss what I need to when we get down to another piece of it. Monthly financial budget report, Laura Reddick?
This past month has been challenging. We do have, we have completed the payroll conversion. That's done. The biggest challenge has been moving the bank accounts. That doesn't sound like a lot until you start trying to put all these computer stuff that's automatically set to go to this bank or this bank, and you realize it's written a check out of this bank account physically, but it's recorded in this one. It has been a challenge. So, if you note that you don't have a listing yet of your journal entries, that'll come next month. I wanted to make sure that I got them all in there, and all the bank accounts moved over before, actually sent you the finalized report. But you'll see a lot of in, out, back in, back out.
And to our knowledge, this has never been out.
No. And so, it was something that was way overdue. There was no rhyme or reason for the structure of the account. They were just some here, some there. So, this has given us some structure and some certainly economic advantages to the city. And so, we will be moving forward and completing that. It will take us probably a couple of months before we get everything, you know, all checks clear and we get everything accomplished there. Also, on another note, we had our collection services. We have not actually put anything over in the collection. Before we did that, I had assigned Ms. Kelly Odom to send out final letters to these folks. And she has done an outstanding job of collecting quite a few accounts, and that helps, not only does it help the city in physically collecting the money, and we not having to pay a commission to a collection agency, but it also helps those people in that they're not turned over to collections and don't have that bad credit on their records. So, it's a win-win for everyone.
We have left the write-offs.
And yeah, and we've left the write-offs off our agenda, so we'll be putting those on next month. She gave me the list, and she said, "This is just a tentative list," because she's still working on them. And so, hopefully, she will get them much smaller, a smaller list. Right now, all I'm seeing on it are mostly either accounts that are less than $50, most of them less than $2. And that's not worth effort. And, or deceased people that have nothing, you know, we've been contacting them, their state don't have anything, so those would just have to be written off. Far from that, we'll be moving forward with our next phase of our computer conversions in the next few months to come, but it'll probably be several months before we go to the next step. So, have any?
Any questions for Laura Reddick? All right. Will it accept a motion to approve the budget report? Laura Reddick? Make a motion to approve the budget report from Laura Reddick? We have a motion. We have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura Reddick. Monthly report from the city manager?
Mayor, commissioners, I prepare my monthly report from the department heads reports to create, say, the city that'll be available the first of the month of April online and in the lobby here. Just wanted to remind people about the Chamber Dinner that is Thursday night, the annual Mount Pleasant Chamber Dinner. If you have not responded and want to go, there's still plenty of time. Just let us know. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do we need a motion on that?
No.
Okay. All right, special reports from other city departments or committees?
There are nuns.
Okay. Number 11, new business. We're going to go into A, Ordinance 2018-1025. This is relating to a refuge or trash disposal in regards to junk and bulky items and yard waste. I'm going to ask that we defer this until the April meeting. We have asked each of the commissioners to kind of give us a case. It's been, some have, some haven't. At the end of the day, the people that are going to have to deal with this are going to be, I hate to say this, but it's going to be Steve and it's going to be Kate. So, I've asked each of them to work together and by the next meeting to come to us, being the commissioner, with their recommendations, since they're going to have to be the ones that deal with it. So, do we need to vote on deferring that?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion to defer Ordinance 2018-1025 to the April meeting?
I have a motion to defer to April.
We have a motion. We have a second?
I will second that.
All right. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Ordinance 2019-1032. This is first reading. An ordinance amending Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control, for the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code by adding a new Chapter 6 relating to planning and zoning business.
Mayor, commissioners, this is our effort on a regular basis, probably every couple of years, to take a look at our fees and our rates to keep up with other communities and costs that we entail by just simply having somebody in front of the planning commission. So, you have something in front of you, each of you, planning and zoning fees. The top sheet is our current rate and our, the second sheet is our proposed rate, which we feel are very much in line with where other similarly situated cities are around us. We're also happy to answer any questions you have about it. So, the proposed rate, which is the second sheet, that starts out with a 300 at the top, that would be what would be in the actual ordinance that you're looking at for first reading.
Okay. Again, this is a first reading. Do we have anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this?
It would be a public hearing on the second reading.
That's correct. Seeing none, Laura Reddick, would you please note that? That being the case, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion for Ordinance 2019-1032 for the planning and zoning fees.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion. A second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. C, Ordinance 2019-1033. Again, this is a first reading. An ordinance amending Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter 2, the zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code. The same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein by rezoning three parcels of property. Cory has kind of coached me on how we should do this, so this is how we'll do it. There are going to be three pieces of property that we are going to rezone.
It was presented at last week's planning commission meeting, all of them separately.
That's correct. If each one of them were presented separately, then I'm going to touch on each one very quickly. The first one is from property currently owned by Teresa Bitterman and Robert Stephen McCain, Stephen McCain, from R1 Low Density Residential to CH, which is Highway Commercial. Let me make it very clear that this is a change that we are making within the city administratively when we made some zoning changes within the community. This is a piece of property that got inadvertently rezoned. We made the mistake, so we're taking care of it, as I said in the planning meeting. We did it. We're taking care of it. And I'm sorry that it happened, but trying to move a community forward from 1982 to 2019, we're probably going to make some mistakes in it, so please bear with us. The next piece of property that is part of this is Mr. Kevin Lee Brooks and Sarah Marie Brooks. Again, another one that got improperly rezoned from R1 Low Density Residential to CH, which is Highway Commercial. Again, the same thing. I see Stephen McCain, and I see Mr. Brooks here for those. Is there anything either one of you'd like to add to that?
No. Not at all.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. The next one we have is from Mr. and Ms. John Root. What they are asking for, they have a piece of property owned, bluegrass, that is catty hoarded from his daily business, that he is asking that we zone from R1 Low Density Residential to IL, which is Light Industrial, which frankly is being used for today, and I want to thank y'all for coming forward and asking us to do that. Any questions regarding that?
We handed out at the study session a list of bullet points that the impact of changing the zoning has to have on the community for it to make sense. And I don't know if any of you have it in front of you, that's what I wouldn't look for.
Yeah, I have.
So, that is not just the fact that there may have been a mistake and it was rezoned, but it has to be in general the best for the community, but it's so, we'd ask you to make sure if you are in agreeance with that, that would be in the motion.
Yeah, that's what we're getting ready to ask. Thank you, Kate. Whoever decides to make this motion, because I think nobody will speak towards it, and I see that we do this in one ordinance still, but that it be listed as whoever makes the motion is why they feel like we need to do this. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Do you make the motion for that question?
No, Laura Reddick.
You're asking for the motion. I understand why we're doing, you're asking for us if we make the motion in accordance that we agree with the fact finding of this.
That's correct.
I'll make the motion that we make this, change this, we make this ordinance in accordance to what we found with the planning board and the zoning found in the fact finding for these zoning amendments, that it corrects those findings that we had done in the oversight.
Would you mind reading those things that you feel are appropriate?
Okay.
So that's in the minute?
All right. That, in the fact findings, that the amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area. There is no adverse effect upon adjoining property owners unless effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. No property owner or small group of property owners will benefit materially from the change to the detriment of the general public. And the conditions affecting the area have changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area's, well, actually, that one doesn't, it isn't, the condition hasn't changed. It was our area. The conditions were that. So, there's no change in the conditions other than to correct what we had done in the oversight. That's what the land was being used for there, from my understanding. So, one of the conditions was it's a flood zone. It can't be used for anything else anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that the conditions affecting the area have changed to a sufficient extent to warrant amendment to the area's land use plan and subsequently the zoning map. So, it put in accordance to what it should be used for, the zone.
Again, this is first reading. Anybody like to speak to this? Please let the minutes show. No one?
Maybe you just put it back, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Again, this is first reading. That being said, with Commissioner Blanketship's motion, do we hear a second?
I will second that.
All right. We have a couple of seconds. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries under the first reading. All right. D, Ordinance 2019-1034. Again, first reading. An ordinance stating community center rental fees for the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
Mayor, commissioners, this is similar to the planning and zoning fees that we took a look at. This, we changed the fees for the community center back in 2017, and we're updating that ordinance. So, you have in front of you the 2017 rate and the suggested rate in front of you, and that's our recommendation. Again, this is just on first reading, so if there's any feedback and we need to make any changes between now and second reading, we can, but that's the way 2019-1034 is set up at this point. I think Thomas sent all of you emails, kind of comparing us to the Memorial Building. I know we're not the Westbury House Event Center, but just talking about what rates are in the community. And some people, while it is a community center and it's certainly where we want our community to hang out and have events, I just signed off on a $1,500 electric bill. That's just this month, and it's been much worse than that, and gas too. So, it costs a lot to run the building. So, we have to keep our rates where they need to be, but also where the city can enjoy the use of the center. And it's really busier than it's ever been.
Yeah, Thomas doing a good job with that. All right. Any questions on that, since that is a first reading? Let the minutes show that no one had to speak, or had to speak on that. With that being the case, we'd entertain a motion for this.
Mayor, make a motion for Ordinance 2019-1034 for the rental fees for the community center.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second?
I will second that.
All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. All right. C, this is a resolution, 2019-9, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to adopt the countywide hazard mitigation plan.
Yes, the County Office of Emergency Management, with our city and with Spring Hill, have updated the hazard mitigation plan. As you, many of you know, the City of Columbia dropped out and created their own Office of Emergency Management, so this has been adjusted to reflect these three communities, and they've asked that we adopt what we just put together with the countywide hazard mitigation plan. And we have no problem with it at all and recommend it as well.
Absolutely. They're a huge help if we ever need them. Any questions whatsoever for Kate on this at this time? All right. With that being the case, do I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept as presented with the chances.
We have a second?
Second.
All right. We got a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. F, a discussion of audit for 18 and 19?
Mayor, commissioners, this has kind of come to our attention since you all are aware that we're awaiting to hear from the audit on our gas sales tax, that we know that there will be some money owed to the state, and possibly whether or not the current auditor should have caught that in his defense. Others have not proposed to him. As far as we know, there's never been sales tax collected on gas for commercial and industrial customers ever, even when it was privately held, but we don't have records that far back. So, don't know if we're going to approach the auditor. I want some input from you on that, and then want some input from you as a group on whether or not, I know we just agreed to a lower rate, but we all wanted to make sure since the state, we have to notify the state who is going to do our audit. If you would like us to bid that out, those services, we are happy to do that quickly.
Y'all have heard my speech on this. I think we need to swap. I think after every three years, I know in our industry, every three years you swap whether you want to or not, no matter what the price is. Just a different set of eyes looking at it, and we need that.
Now's a good time to do it because he's made several mistakes.
I agree.
I agree as well.
It has something to do with the audit, because I've already said we do it, so it's somebody different, but do they try to get all the tax law gas, it was a sale?
It's a state law.
Okay.
So, what we're trying to do is, so residential gas use is exempt from the sales tax, commercial is not, and that's what we have not been collecting on.
Okay.
And there's certain parts of commercial that are not.
If they use the product, industrial, if they use the gas to create their product.
Create the product.
And they have to show us they.
That's what it, that's right, that's what they were doing.
It's the state's call, it's not ours.
Yeah, that's right.
But if the state don't give us a pass, or?
No.
Go pay.
We're waiting on that number.
No, no pass.
How far back do we?
Three years.
Three.
And they have not given us a figure yet, but our budget amendment did have some money set aside for that.
And I did have a meeting with them, or a telephone conference scheduled Thursday to, to.
Hear the great name.
Go through, go through some of it and see, make sure that I'm not missing any information they've requested. They sent us a list about ye long of things to look for and to look up, so we've been working.
So, the commercial gas companies, that you actually, have they turned, would they be determining that they shouldn't be taxed?
Well, if they don't, that's the state to be auditing them.
Okay, yeah.
It's the state auditing us, so it's really.
I understand that.
I understand that, yes.
We're gonna be looking like the bad guys because we're collecting the money, but it's the state telling us you have to go collect the money.
I understand that, I just, you know.
Yeah, but it's, it's a state, it's a state law that the commercial, residential gas customers don't have to pay the sales tax on it, but commercials do, and industrial commercials can get an exemption, or they can get a reduced rate, depending on, if it's a total exemption, it has to be specifically used in the making of the product. In other words, the tile plant is the best example, I mean, the Keons use the gas to buy their product.
Is it up to us to notify the tile company of that, or the state?
It's up to the customer to give us the certificate, and if we don't have the certificate, we're supposed to.
But that was a communication breakdown, they don't know that.
I understand that, the customers do, we're servicing, know this information.
There's a breakdown between the state and the customer, yeah.
But who knows, that's what I'm saying, so who notifies the customer now?
It'll be us.
So, you're saying we're looking like the bad guy?
So, we're gonna notify the customer.
Now, going forward with new industry, we've already had conversations with Murray Alliance, that you need to have these conversations well in advance, that you're gonna be using that in the manufacturing of their product, you need to know that upfront, and get that validation that they don't have to pay, or they get the reduced rate, but there needs to be better communication on that, at the state level.
Can they go back that three years and get that credit? Can the tile plant go back that three years and get the credit?
Sanoco was able to, weren't they?
Well, the, yeah.
Sanoco was able to.
Sanoco did.
That's what I, I think that's. You can prove, that's how it all started, was Sanoco didn't have the proper paperwork in place, and then when the state realized that, they did get the proper paperwork in place.
And that's when they red flags.
And they said, okay, we're gonna audit all of them. But Sanoco did get the proper paperwork, and they did get.
Have you spoken, either one of you spoken to our officer about, did they have any knowledge of this, that we should have been charged?
No, we haven't. We know that they didn't know it.
Okay.
Here's what we're trying to do, is let's get some bids, because Cory and I talked about it a little bit, and I don't know if we'd ever collect them, you know, it would be most difficult.
Oh, I know, I just asked if they knew that, I understand that.
We haven't had that conversation.
We hadn't, we hadn't broached that conversation.
Okay. I didn't know if we'd broached it yet.
But I say that we, you know, notify the officers of the gift, because they have kind of like enough of us out there, you know, because they could have went back further than three years. I just want to make sure that all the other chain of command, you know, they should, should not be charged.
So, if you wouldn't mind, if somebody would make a motion that we, because we have already voted to keep this firm, and now we're saying we want to make a motion to go ahead and bid this out.
So, I make a motion that we go ahead and bid this out, bid.
All right.
To.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
There you go.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, G, temporary financing bid approval for long-term sewer rehabilitation product through the USDA. We bid this out, and we received three bids. And this is gonna take a second, so I'll just be, tell you upfront. We received three bids, US Bank bid 2.78 percent, First Farmers, which I work for and I'm declaring that, bid 3.43 percent, Reliant bid, which Bedford is an employee of, bid 3.73 percent. The bids came in, US Bank, our bid said it could be up to $6.627 million. US Bank bidded at $6.672 million. In conversations with the other two bids, three million of that, we weren't gonna borrow at this point in time because it was the payoff of a state revolving fund loan at 2.05 percent interest. So, simple math tells you, you don't swap something for 2.78 for 2.05. But then, and this is where I'm gonna try not to muddy the water any more than I had to, but Kate and Loretta and I have spent the day, today, on the phone with US Bank. And I'm gonna do my best, please, don't criticize me for my penmanship, but it's not great. So, what we have done today is with US Bank, has talked about this, and they, their bid was up two. So, if you compare 3.627 across the board, US Bank still has the best bid, even though we have to draw the full amount. Well, in conversation today, 3.627 million dollars at 2.78 percent. Now, their requirement is that we put all of the money in the bank at once, okay? So, we're gonna borrow 3.627 million dollars at 2.78 percent. All right, we still gotta draw all the money, so you're sitting there going, oh, we gotta pay the interest on 3.627 upfront, instead of where the other bids are. But then, if you bring the bid at 2.78 down to 3.6, it's still the best bid, because it would be about $60,000 less than the other two, just interest cost alone. So, then, in that discussion, we got talking today, in my world, in the banking world, you can match off funds, okay? So, you sit there and you think, oh my gosh, you're gonna pay the interest, so what we decided today in a conversation with them is go ahead and draw the 3.627 million dollars. So, we're gonna go ahead and draw six, 3.627 million dollars, and this is your loan. And we're gonna turn right around, and we're gonna deposit that money in US Bank. As of today, they gave us rates in the range of 2.30 to 1.70. Money market is my recommendation, they were saying somewhere 2.30 today. That gives us the availability of those funds immediately, if needed. That way, we don't have a third-party provider having to pay this, we don't have to pay a third-party provider to do it. Let's just say they're gonna pay us 2.30. We're gonna pay, our effective rate on 3.6 million dollars is gonna be .48.
Hey, do it right there.
Now, a bigger discussion, and we have not decided this as yet. Do we go ahead, once we get the final bid number on the 2.30, do we go ahead and borrow all the 6.6 and go ahead and pay off that 2, 3 million dollars at 2.05, and we could effectively be getting it at .48, we'd save another one and a half percent?
I agree.
If we just do the 3.6, and we do it this way, now, these are odd numbers, okay? Just numbers that we pulled, we're gonna save $210,000. Any way you like, because we're only gonna be paying an effective rate on that money of a half a percent, because they're gonna let us match it off.
I'm not impressed.
Well, you need to thank those two ladies right over there.
My recommendation is you simply approve US Bank as the finance.
Absolutely, but, but what I wanted to do was make sure everybody understands what we're doing, don't want, because this is very important to our community, and if we can save this community $200,000, folks, that's gonna go a long way down this road.
And we will come back to this group if we are gonna pay off this paper volume loan.
Right, we've got, what we've got to do now is, we've got a decision to make, once they tell us what the effective rate is gonna be on that money market, okay?
Is the money market rate tiered, Bill?
No, they're giving us flat rate on it. We could have gone to a CD.
Yeah.
Yeah, we negotiated pretty hard with the CD there. At the end of the day, let's get the effective rate that's gonna be on that money market, and then, then we can make some very edge-hated decisions about whether or not we wanna go ahead and pay off that state revolving fund, because I had a whole lot relative to the CD being paid at 4.8, and I had 2.05.
Me too.
And the only missing piece of the proposal is we've not gotten the chance to talk to USDA, even though we've called several times, but we will get that done.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I just, for the, it does the statistic math quite fluidly. The only thing that you have to vote on today is the rate. You received three bids, and which one is the most financially responsible?
And irregardless of what we negotiated with them today, the best bid is US Bank.
Even though it's $65,000 cheaper over the whole, even though it's a full draw?
No, it's gonna be more than that, if it's full draw.
Yeah.
But if we, you know, on the, you go to the big number, we could save $340,000, $50,000 in this number a year by going ahead and paying off that state revolving loan.
I agree with you.
And that's gonna get us down the road, folks.
In fact, they're letting us invest the dollars into an account that's liquid still.
It's still liquid, they tried to talk us, they were talking us through it with us about doing some trust investing. That is very dangerous, because those, a lot of what they would be investing in is very volatile. You could go from what you know you can earn for a period of time to a, you don't believe in, that happened, what happened the last week in December, or last week in 2018, the money, the stock market lost everything, and it gained in one year, in a matter of a week, and that's what those funds are tied against, so you see the volatility that you can have in those funds, so you take it, you put it over in guaranteed money, and you don't have any questions whatsoever.
Not near as aggressive, but not near as.
So, so as Kate said, it's not all we do.
Right now, we need to do now is.
Go with the low bid, which is US Bank.
Go with the low bid, which is US Bank.
I'll make the motion that we go with US Bank.
And Cory, you have something to add?
Are you two planning to participate in the vote?
I guess we should, should we vote?
I don't have a problem with that. I'm not getting any, because I'm not getting any voluntary guarantee.
Yeah, neither. How do you feel about it?
I would prefer you not participate in the vote.
That's fine.
Because. I'll recuse my vote.
We'll get there in just a second. All right, do we have a motion to accept US Bank as the best bid on our new USDA's term, long-term sewer rehabilitation project?
I say we do give a plan, consider it a little.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Aye as well.
Motion passed, approved, arrow.
All right.
Bill, I'd like to thank you for your participation in this.
Oh, you're welcome.
It made a difference.
And Kate and Loretta for the time invested in it, I know it's tedious.
Yeah, we spent, Loretta told me she seen before today, that she seen it in her first two years, but I felt like it was important for our community.
It did, I did, but.
In a good way.
In a very good way.
In a good way.
And I also gave Cory fair warning, I'll say this here, I said, don't put both of us on the front page in the paper, please, so we both feel confident this will keep us off there. All right, H, recommendation to the planning commission to review request to change Locust Street to Tiger Trail. This group has to make the recommendation back to the planning commission for that, just so everybody has a clear understanding.
And it is Tiger Trail, yeah.
You're trying to do a tie for you?
I think we were all confused last week, but we went and looked at the actual application from the principal, and she's requesting it to be Tiger Trail. I had said Tiger Way several times.
Originally it was Tiger Way.
I think that's what I was saying, yeah, her paperwork says Tiger Trail.
Okay.
So, then, we just, all you're recommending is the planning commission take a look at it, make a recommendation back to you.
Yeah, so if they come back and say, hey, we meant Tiger Way, sorry.
Game over.
Recommending that you send it to the planning commission in 911.
That's the process, yeah.
Okay, that being said, would somebody like to make that motion?
Let me, your, your motion says Locust Street, that, are you talking about Locust or North Locust?
North Locust.
Just in front of the school.
Yeah, it's the only part of it.
You need to sign that, money guy.
So, it needs to be North Locust?
It needs to be North Locust.
Make a recommendation to change North Locust to Tiger Trail, that's the only section that has, no houses on it.
The recommendation is ask the planning commission to take.
Yeah, we're gonna ask it. Okay, did we say that right?
At some point, everyone said it.
I'll make a recommendation.
All right, let's make, would you make a recommendation?
I'll make a, a motion to make a recommendation to the planning commission to review the request to change North Locust Street to Tiger Trail.
There you go.
Perfect, thank you, the Lords. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I purchase a replacement Dodge Durango for narcotics officer.
Mayor and Commissioners, most of you are aware that there was a tragic accident, and as a result, we did, they did total the Dodge Durango, a very new vehicle, but they totaled it, and so, this, it was on a lease, and because we got an insurance settlement for it, we can pay that off, and this is a state bid to purchase a new Dodge Durango, with all of the equipment needed for a K9 in the vehicle. Did I say all that right?
I bet it's sitting in Columbia right now.
It is, we already have our hands on it, we just need you to vote on it.
Oh, you got those right about a mile, and you can see them stacked up. All right, do we have a motion to purchase a new Dodge Durango for the narcotics officer?
I'll make a motion that we purchase Durango.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. What's funny?
I just had this vision of new Dodge Durango stacked up, passed by, so.
They are off there by the.
And these police officers drooling over them.
Yeah, all great, wonder why, where they're going. All right, J, weed control bid award.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is just another area where we have not bid in the past on services, and we do spend quite a bit of money, this is all out of the lagoons, lagoons, we have to control the weeds, because we have to control the banks of the lagoons, and I'll let you, turn over to you, what kind of bid you have in.
We only received one timely bid, we didn't receive one after the time that passed, so therefore, that bid was not accepted, because it was not timely. And that bid was from Kim Pro, and the bid price, and they bid for three years, would be $3,750 each year, for a total of $11,250 for the three years.
But we are only accepting one.
Correct.
Okay?
Is that taken care of, the trees on the banks also?
Anything that impacts the lagoon.
Yeah.
It's both going to affect them, it's like, oh.
So, I always got trouble with them, they have green trees out there.
It says, this is the wording.
It's just weeds.
Yeah, it says.
I mean, it's just.
Grass friendly, yeah. Scope of work, and they have a map attached, grass-friendly brush and broadleaf control on dike walls. Total kill herbicide to be applied to fifth line. And scheduled work, initial application in the spring, and then a second application in the summer, June, July timeframe.
Now, we have separate, as far as cutting trees, and we also have a separate where we are managing animals, rodents, otters.
They got brush killer that will kill those trees on the banks, because there's nothing, there's nothing.
Well, what we do is we follow the.
If you ask them, if you ask them, you know, they might.
Yeah, we follow what the state recommends, as far as, do you want us to kill it, do you want us to cut it, the best way to do it, so that we're living up to their standards as far as lagoons.
Right.
So, this is just for the, the cannibals to kill the weeds.
There is a special one they have to remove trees because of the root damage.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
The laddies.
The laddies.
Exactly right, you don't want trees growing in. Exactly right, you don't want trees growing in a leady.
No, that's one of the, they get the killer, we kill the trees in the roots.
All right, any more discussion? All right, will we entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept them.
Is this the one Chempro that won?
We can do it with just one bid?
Yeah, but see, we opened, we had it advertised, and everything, and the other bid just did not, they did not-
I'll make a motion that we accept Chempro for their bid that they submitted for the three years for $11,250.
No, one year.
No, it's three years.
I thought we were only adopting one year then.
Well, it's, it's one year with an additional two years, oh, up to three.
Should we bid it again next year?
No, what, year, it's a year one contract, in other words, it's year to year, but it's the same price they gave us the three-year bid.
Well, I would wish I would have had without it, by getting the same prices for three years.
My issue.
I think it needs to be bid.
You never get that bid then if you don't do it for three years.
Our, our internal control policy says every three years. Now, we can get out of a contract if we, if we want to and we're not happy with it, but we don't bid it every year.
Okay.
So, we need to say three years.
All right, Dolores did that, I just wanted to question, do we have a second?
I'll second.
You got a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Kate, authorize the city attorney to file delinquent 2017 tax sale lawsuit.
I'll let Cory handle any questions on that.
So, every, every year by April the first, we have to file a new lawsuit to collect the delinquent taxes, and this is April 2000, April 1st, 2019, we filed a lawsuit to collect 2017 delinquent taxes, and so I'm just asking that you authorize me to file that lawsuit in two weeks.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, that we file that.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Officer Tatch?
Yes, sir.
Nobody back there to sign up?
Yes, sir.
All right, any of the Commissioners, if there anything else, say like that.
I'd just like to come, come in with the fire and police department on their handling that house fire the other day.
You missed the story, I'm sorry, you missed that.
Michael loves to fill it.
Yeah, you need to ask Michael to say that.
Unless the media calls.
Yeah, unless the media calls.
But in all seriousness, in all seriousness, when they got through, they said, our chief, our chief knocked on the door.
Well, I'm just going to compliment from the, Phil, I'm just complimenting on the disturbance that it did not cause within the community while it was going on that time. That could have been a lot worse, and it was calm in the community while it was going, going on.
All right, well, with that, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, aye? Opposed, motion carries.
Hey, well, it's just how Cory is the resident. We didn't comment. You have to remember. Yeah. Yeah, he might have, yeah. Hey, what? It's my duty. Yeah. They might have taken it outside. I don't know, but I was shooting back to Loretta. Like, round. I got, yeah. Well, we're, 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 we're,